Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to this regularly scheduled planning commission meeting held on Tuesday, February 25th of the year of 2025. I'd like to open the meeting at 7:30. May we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Fitzher?
Here.
Mr. Hera?
Here.
Mr. Cussera?
Here.
Mr. Nushai?
Here.
Ms. Redman?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Solomon? And Mr. Tinlin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda number four is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes that like to make in tonight's agenda?
Chair, could we time box the training to a half an hour? I just...
We can try.
It should be a lot less than that.
Less than a half an hour?
That's great.
This is intended to be a very, very brief thing tonight, so...
Yeah, I know I've said this before. It'd be great that when we... I love doing these training things, but if we could have an outline in advance or some kind of syllabus, if you will, that would be great so that we have some additional information that we can review before we actually have the training. But, perfect.
Okay, with that addition, I'll approve the agenda as it stands. And we'll move on to agenda item number five, which is approval of the regular meeting minutes from February 11th, 2025.
Motion to approve meeting minutes from February 11th, 2025.
Support.
Motion support. Does anybody have any changes, anything else? Seeing none, I'll take roll call, please.
Mr. Fitzher?
Yes.
Mr. Hera?
I'm staying, I wasn't here.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. Nushai?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda number six is public discussion. If anyone from the public wishes to opine, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and we'll give you about three minutes.
I'll keep it quick. This is Linda Hale, 940 West Selfridge. And I know that it's kind of unusual in that I just found out that you guys vote for yourselves. And there's going to be an election of officers tonight. So, my friends and I are just here to say that we've been watching when we haven't been here. And we've been here throughout this year on different subjects. And we like what we've seen so far. And we're happy with the officers as they are. We like Mr. Cussera and Ms. Redman, and we would hope that they would stay in their same positions. We like stability. And that's all. We just want to give our support to them. And I know that it doesn't matter because you're voting for yourselves, but I just... If it did, we wanted to give our support. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in public? Seeing none, I will then close public. And we'll move on to our election of officers. And I think Nick is going to walk us through this.
All right, thank you. So, if you recall, what we do with the election of officers is any individual can make an appointment of any board member. We'll start as... Start at chair. You can appoint another member on the commission or yourself. And then, once one appointment is made, we'll state that appointment for the record three times. If there are any additions to the appointments, those can be appointed or nominated at that point. And then, we'll have a roll call vote in order of when they're nominated. And so, we'll do that for chair, vice chair, and secretary.
So, you're saying that you call all nominations first?
So, by positions. So, chair, we'll have the nominations first. If there's one, two, or three nominations, it depends on what the commission... How they want to proceed. And then, the first nomination, we'll do a roll call vote on them. And then, the second, if there's another nomination, and so on. So, we'll start at vice chair, vice chair, and secretary.
Chair, vice chair, and then secretary? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I will... I would like to nominate Greg as chair.
Second. If we need a second.
Sorry, I didn't touch on that. We don't need a second for the nominations. It's not an official motion. So, it's just a singular nomination. We'll state it three times for the record. See if there's other nominations, and then do the roll call vote.
Yes, I would like to nominate Mr. Tinlin, please.
I would like to nominate Mr. Cussera.
Okay. All right, so we have the nomination of Mr. Gregory Cussera, Mr. Scott Tinlin. Are there any other nominations?
Oh, no, he just says that we have to...
Yeah, we'll do it, so...
I thought three people had...
Oh, no, I stated three times to allow any other nominations. We have the nomination of Mr. Cussera, Mr. Tinlin for chair.
Aren't you supposed to ask us if we will accept the nomination? I thought that was in the paperwork.
I mean, would you like to accept the nomination?
I would accept the nomination, but...
I didn't hear an immediate objection.
Sure, just for the dialogues.
Okay.
I think there's legalese there someplace.
All right. And then, for the third time, Mr. Cussera has been nominated for chair, as well as Mr. Tinlin. Are there any other nominations? Okay, since Mr. Cussera was nominated first, we'll do his roll call. After that, we'll do Mr. Tinlin, regardless of how that vote turns out. Mr. Hera? And this is for... This is for Cussera as chair.
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. Nushai?
No.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Uh, no.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzher?
No.
All right, thank you. That was six yeses and three... Two nos. So, we'll do Mr. Tinlin's for the record.
I think your math is off.
Six yeses and two nos.
Three nos.
Three nos.
Three nos.
Five yes.
All right. Elentry math. Sorry about that.
Five yes, three nos. I want to recount.
I can do that if you want. I do have it for the record, though. All right, so we will do Mr. Tinlin's just to follow suit. Mr. Cussera?
No.
Mr. Nushai?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Fitzher?
Yes.
And Mr. Hera?
No.
All right, Mr. Cussera has been elected as the chair.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your support.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Redman for vice chair.
Support.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Tinlin for vice chair, please.
All right, we have Ms. Redman and Mr. Tinlin both nominated for vice chair. Any other nominations? Mr. Redman and Mr. Tinlin both nominated for vice chair. Any other nominations?
Do they accept the nominations?
I think we do it after he calls it three times.
Did you get a second on...
We don't need a second for the nominations.
That's right, okay.
We're doing this once a year. We get out of sorts. Yeah. And this is the third confirmation for that. Ms. Redman nominated for vice chair, Mr. Tinlin nominated for vice chair. Any other nominations? Okay, I will call the roll call vote.
I'll accept just for the record, since we did it the last time. I'm sure Tinlin does, too.
Yes.
Okay. So, the first roll call vote is for Ms. Redman as vice chair. Mr. Nushai?
No.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzher?
Yes.
Mr. Hera?
Yes.
And Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
All right, that is six yeses and two nos.
Three nos.
I got two.
Oh, two?
It was two.
Oh.
I got that one right.
All right, all right.
I double-checked.
Thanks, Fitzher.
I'll tell them for you.
Now, we'll do the roll call vote for Mr. Tinlin as vice chair. Ms. Redman?
Uh, no.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Fitzher?
No.
Mr. Hera?
No.
Mr. Cussera?
No.
Mr. Nushai?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Redman has been elected as vice chair.
Congratulations.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Hera as secretary.
I'll accept.
All right, Mr. Hera's been nominated as secretary. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Fitzher as secretary.
I'll accept.
Okay. Both Mr. Hera and Mr. Fitzher have been elected sec... Or nominated as secretary. Are there any other nominations? Mr. Hera and Mr. Fitzher have been nominated for secretary. Are there any other nominations? And Mr. Hera and Mr. Fitzher have been nominated for secretary. Any other nominations? All right, we will have the roll call vote for secretary, starting with Mr. Hera.
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
No.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzher?
No.
Mr. Hera?
I think I already did.
No, you didn't.
You accepted the...
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. Nushai?
No.
And Ms. Redman?
Yes.
All right, that is five yeses and three nos. Okay. We will do the roll call vote for Mr. Fitzher. Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Fitzher?
Yes.
Mr. Hera?
No.
Mr. Cussera?
No.
Mr. Nushai?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Uh, no.
And Mr. Scott?
No.
All right, Mr. Hera's been elected as a secretary. So...
Congratulations.
That should conclude our election of officers, unless there's any other questions.
Do we... We don't discuss that... Them at all, ever?
I think there was an opportunity to discuss.
I was just wondering. I didn't know if I was... I want to... Can I just say, Fitzher, I think it's important that anybody who's elected should probably have really good attendance. It's nothing personal, so... I know it's hard to make it to meetings sometimes.
I just also want to say, thanks, Nick, for guiding us through that. That was orderly. I remember a couple nomination or a couple elections ago, it was a little bit... It wasn't that clean, so thank you for walking us through that.
And you're a parliamentarian, right?
Uh, no. Attorney. The attorney is.
Well, whoever does that, I think, takes that title. They've been doing that. That's what Renus has done in the past. Parliamentarian. Am I right on that, or...
No, you're not.
I'm not? Okay.
It says it in our bylaws.
Okay. He was a parliamentarian.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, and congratulations. We'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is planning commission training, implementing... Implementing the master plan.
All right, this is going to be brief. Nick has this, and is going to send it to everybody, too, just in case you want to take a look back at the slides. It's going to be brief, not least because I was very sick last week and still devolve into fits of coughing if I talk for too long, so we're going to try not to get to that point. So, the topic here is... So, if I can get the presentation. Just looking ahead to master plan implementation, we're not going to try to, like, set a schedule or anything tonight. This is a sort of a basic... The documents are going out for comment, and during that comment period, it's a good idea for everybody on the board to take a look through them. And when we're thinking about, you know, what our priorities for implementation are after the plan is adopted, these are kind of the elements of the plan to kind of look for and make sure that you're kind of noting these particular aspects of the plan content. So, on this body, our primary tool for master plan implementation is zoning amendments. So, there are other things in the master plan that aren't zoning-related that are nevertheless goals or objectives or action items, and I'm going to talk about how we deal with those, too. But one of the things that you can look for in the plan as you're going through it is the content that looks like this on the right, where you've got this little table with some action items in it and some goals above it. These are all things that you should keep in mind, make notes, maybe highlight the ones that matter the most to you, so that when we do start talking about how we schedule a set of implementation actions, you can chime right in and say, "These are the ones that are the most important to me." The future land use map is the next item to be looking for. It's a big map labeled future land use in the plan, so it's going to be fairly obvious where it resides. But that is paired with these descriptions of the categories that appear on the map on the following pages. And so, reading through those category descriptions and getting yourself familiar with them is another good way to kind of prep yourself for any conversations that we're going to have about what we're going to do and when, what we want to work on first. And then, as far as those are concerned, we also have these little study areas. And in those study areas, if you look on the pages for each of those, there are these bullet points. And those bullet points are principles that we established to reflect on any time we think about development in those study areas. So, that's another thing that you would want to be keeping in mind and highlighting or otherwise noting for when we start to talk about our schedule of action after the plan is adopted. And finally, and I said this was going to be short, and I meant it. Finally, there are those advocacy items that I was talking about. So, the plan includes a lot of advocacy items that fall outside the PC's immediate purview of, you know, making zoning amendments, thinking about districts in the map and things like that. And staff, of course, can push for progress on those, but we are planning to have a couple of joint planning commission and city council meetings that will provide planning commission members with some direct opportunities to advocate for those items that appear in the master plan that are not necessarily zoning items. And for an example of that, we can go back to this earlier example, which talks about action items for infrastructure. So, we've got some goals for roads, non-motorized, and water and sewer. And when we look at these action items here, we see that city council is one of the lead bodies on all four of them. And they're talking about things like identify initial traffic calming measures to deploy in areas that infuses having safety problems with intent to study after implementation. Streets for high priority study include Lincoln, Elmwood, Bywood, Hendrickson Phillips, Washington and Selfridge. So, that's not something that the planning commission can necessarily do by changing an ordinance. However, when we get into those joint meeting situations, we can, as a group, have decided before the joint meeting that, like, we would like to emphasize this when we're in discussion with city council as something that really matters to us, that we think should be a high priority. And we can engage in that advocacy at that point when we're face-to-face with council, which, of course, has the ultimate power of the purse to do something about those things.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you saying... Are you saying that after we do the study, we would then set up a joint meeting and kind of share the results of the study? Are you talking about those?
Well, I mean, it depends a little bit on what we're talking about. Initially, as far as advocating to council, we're really going to be saying, "Look, we just finished this master plan." And, you know, it's been adopted now, and you've adopted it. We'd like to draw your attention to these items in particular because they are, you know, not things that we can do on planning commission by changing the zoning ordinance, but we think they're very important for these reasons, and we'd like to see council take that under advisement and push them as its own priorities.
So, it'll be things that we have already decided we have a plan for?
Essentially, yeah. I mean, you're not going to necessarily have all the details in a plan or a budget or anything like that.
Right, right. But like, an overall focus of... An overall knowledge of, like, hey, we're all on the same page here.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. And then, yeah, we want to have some of those joint meetings to give you that opportunity to really talk to council about what you think is important.
In terms of... I think joint meetings would be a great, great idea for us to have, both with city council and maybe even, I would suggest, even with staff. More specifically, I'm thinking about the capital improvement plan.
Sure.
Right? In terms of implementing goals and advocating for goals that we've set within the master plan, I mean, we're staring at infrastructure goals right now, right? And that's a perfect opportunity to really advocate and implement the goals we've set for us. And so, I'm hoping that, you know, one or if not a couple of those joint meetings is oriented around the capital improvement plan, well before it's presented to us.
I second that, yeah.
Yes, that... The CIP is going to be an opportunity for that type of advocacy.
It comes soon, though, doesn't it?
It's going to be fairly soon. I don't know exactly where that is in progress.
Oh, I thought I remembered it being at the beginning of the year-ish, right, usually?
Yeah. Budgeting is, what, April or something like that?
The budget needs to be... I'll touch on it.
Okay, thanks.
But at any rate, I didn't want to take up a ton of time tonight. I just wanted to kind of give everybody sort of a frame for thinking about, you know, as we've got this kind of lull period, we're going to have 63 days where this plan is out for comment by our neighboring communities and all these other agencies that we're sending it to. It's a good opportunity to go through the document and reflect on it and really kind of pick out the stuff that matters the most to you, highlight it, so that we can have a discussion, you know, as a planning commission about what we'd really like to tackle first. And then, if we are in that situation where we've got the direct advocacy opportunity, we can also be prepared for that. And that's really it. That's all I really wanted to talk about tonight. If you have any other comments or questions, obviously, this is a great time, but otherwise, that's really what I wanted to put a bug in your ear about, of just kind of looking at these things.
We approved the master plan from us, and we sent it on to mayor and council.
Yep.
And we haven't got their approval yet, right?
They're supposed to be sending it out at their next meeting.
Will we get their input before it goes out to the public comment, or does that overlap each other?
Well, they do have the opportunity to provide comment on it during the comment period, just like anybody else. So, I anticipate that they... If they've got comments, they would provide those comments during that period.
Good. Thank you.
Joe, I have a question. I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. In lieu of actually having ordinances updated, you know, we talked about, from a zoning perspective, different descriptions for different areas. When we're reviewing site plans, while the master plan certainly is important, we have to abide by the ordinances that are in place.
That's correct, yes.
Right? So, okay. So, nothing really changes from the site plan review perspective until those ordinances are updated?
Exactly, until you change the actual rules, yeah.
Okay.
All right, one more. So, from what I understand, the way we're going to kind of go through the implementation of it is first by kind of opening it up to what's important to us. And is there a point from there, if you don't get a lot, that we're going to go through it by certain action? Like, the numbers, like, one through... I think it's one through eight, right? Like, are we going to just focus on number one, number two? Or do you have an idea of how you plan to organize that aspect of things?
Yeah, I mean, if we... If we get, like, let's say, everybody just agrees that this is the first thing we want to do, and no one really has a consensus on the second thing to do. So, we do the first thing, and now we're thinking about what the second thing is. Yeah, we'll have suggestions for where that goes if we don't have, you know, a consensus or if there's just a lack of opinion or something like that. I don't think there will be a lack of opinion. But, yeah, we'll definitely have suggestions for that if we're struggling to figure out exactly how to set up the order.
Okay, so we can go through the whole master plan and say, "I like these different areas," even though they might not be on the action list. But we could tie them to an action item, right?
Yeah, I mean, anything that's in there as a principal goal or objective is going to have some action that it can be tied to, yeah.
Right, I see it. Okay, thanks, Joe.
I have a question. So, I think this is, like, due to be submitted to the state every so often, right?
Well, it's not quite submitted to the state, but the Planning Enabling Act requires a community to review its master plan every five years and either take action or reaffirm it, yeah.
So, if I remember correctly, like, we were kind of late. Like, the cadence was every five years, and that five years had... I don't want to say expired, because essentially, we... It sounds like we agreed to continue with the old one for some time while the new one was evaluating. But what my specific question is, when is the next one due?
Well, if we... Let's say we adopt this in May. Your five... Your clock starts then, essentially. And it's... There's not like a master plan police that comes down from Lansing or something and says, "Hey, it's been six years." But there are, you know, lots of benefits to doing it or looking at it every five years and either affirming or updating, you know, based on where you happen to be as a community. One of those being that if you're trying to make the case that your ordinances are up to date and are supported by sound planning, the more recently you've done that planning and the more in alignment your ordinances are with that planning, the better... The stronger your case will be.
I believe we agreed that we were going to review it once a year, right?
That's correct, yeah. We have a schedule now built into our bylaws for annual review in January of our master plan, so that we don't let it get away from us.
Right.
Which is very, very easy to do. If you don't have it on the calendar to look at it, it's easy to... For a year to slip by, and, oh, we haven't looked at the master plan in a while. But, you know, I think we've been, as a body, very intentional about making sure that we look at it on a regular basis and ensure that we're making progress and kind of benchmarking, you know, what have we actually done since adopting this plan?
You know, I might just add that, you know, another benefit to having an active or a current master plan is if the city... or a current master plan is if the city, or should the city be interested in pursuing funding from, you know, beyond what it gets, right? Either from the state, or feds, or what have you, it's additional, additional support saying, hey, we've thought about this, we need, we need money for this project, we need money for something we wanna do, and we've been looking at it for, you know, every year, and here's our master plan to show it, as an example, right? I mean, there's all sorts of other things that help, can help support a, a city pursuing funds.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, 100%. It's a lot easier to do that with a two-year-old master plan than a 12-year-old master plan. Many other things, or?
And you're complete?
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, Joe, I do have a question, sorry, one last one. How often, is there a cadence to which we're gonna do this? Is it like, once a month, we're planning on doing it? I know it's gonna be hard for residents to kind of know exactly what portions of the master plan we're talking about, since it is something you're allowing, which I appreciate us to kind of bring our focus in, and I'm sure that we would have public comment if there are certain things that they wanna discuss or pulled out.
Yeah, very large projects, you might do some sort of open house type thing. Smaller things, it might just be the public hearing, but nevertheless, yeah, there will always be at least an opportunity.
Okay. And do you know if there's a cadence that you, is ideal for you, like, a once a month kind of thing? I don't know what you see in our pipeline.
Yeah, it depends a little bit on development volume, things like that. If we've got three or four site plans on an agenda, we're probably not gonna, you know, include something like this. But yeah, I think you'd try to have, ideally, we have two meetings a month. Ideally, maybe your development review is more concentrated on one of those meetings, and then your discussion is more concentrated on the other, so that neither one gets too unwieldy. And then, as far as how much we're covering, you know, we might cover a, like, a very large item and kind of do that on its own. If we're looking at several smaller things, we might bundle those together. But generally speaking, trying to keep the, the workload manageable, but also make steady progress.
Yeah, okay.
All right, now, for the questions, thank you, Joe, while you're up there, did you have a plan in support?
Excuse me. No, I don't have anything in particular tonight beyond that. That was really what I wanted to, to cover tonight.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll move on to agenda item number 10, Staff Report and Training Opportunities.
All right, so I, I have just some general comments from the staff report, but also took some notes during discussion on items to address now, so if I miss anything, just let me know, not intentional, just trying to jot notes down and make sure I touched on everything. Related to the CIP, I don't have an exact date when anything will be presented, I think the City Council's still trying to finalize their schedule. I think next meeting, I should have a general idea of when timeline-wise we'll be presenting. The budget needs to be improved, be approved in May, per the charter, so it'll be between now and then. And then, there was a question on the zoning ordinance amendments, kind of like the cadence in letting the public know. On the webpage, on the website for development in Clausen, there's a dropdown menu for zoning ordinance amendments. I was figuring that would be a good item to kind of keep track of where certain things are as they be brought up to the Planning Commission, any type of proposed amendment, first reading, second reading, as it gets discussed here through approval by council. So that's a, an area where we can keep track of those. And then, just generally, updates in the, in the staff report. I think at this point, at least five or six of you have completed the citizen planner with the rest of you underway, so that's exciting that we're getting to that point, where everyone has their, their citizen planner certificate. Also, training-wise, there was a, the Michigan Association of Planning newsletter at each of your chairs, and so, if you're going through there, have any upcoming training opportunities that you wanna partake in, let me know, the city can register you for that event. On February 11th, the City Clerk's Office emailed the ethics disclosure form to everyone that needs to submit that. If you have not received it or have any questions, please let me know, they do need that on file by April 15th. And Joe did touch on it, there, we don't have any current site plans received right now, outside of the Shalman Baker developments, which both those entities are conducting their engineering plans, which will then be reviewed by our engineers, and at that point, will be presented to the, the Planning Commission for, for your review. And then, in development updates, the Culvers on Maple was, they opened up on Monday under a temporary certificate of occupancy. There were some exterior landscaping work, infrastructure, minor infrastructure work in the rear yard that has to wait until the spring. The building is ready to go, there was no health and safety concerns by the building official and engineer, so wanted to get them open as they were ready, so feel free to stop by there, and I know they were really excited to open up and finally able to, after getting site plan approval about a year and a half ago, so I know they're really excited to be in, in the community and finally open up.
I'm happy they're there, I love Culvers.
They're, they're a great, great addition to the community. So again, that kind of conducts the end of my report, if I missed anything, or you have any questions, please feel, feel free to ask away.
Just for clarity, it's on here, two, two places, 502 South Main, it doesn't call out what it is, is that the old CNC?
Correct.
Bump shop?
Yeah.
Okay, and it says that they've got a temporary CFO.
They had their CFO issued.
Was issued.
It was issued, and, and that's...
What's confusing is the chart on the sec, on the second page here, it says, the TCO was issued in November 18th of '24, and it expired in January 1st of '24. One of those dates has to be off.
Well, that would be because it was 2025, is when it was supposed to expire, but they did have their CFO issued last year.
Expired January 25?
Yeah, they had their CFO issued in December or January, and that's where I'm trying to balance, is once a project is done, once the CFO is issued, how long do you want me to leave a project on the report for your awareness? Is it just the one meeting, and then we pull it back, or, or what would the?
I mean, well, a temporary CFO is only good for eight months, right?
Right, well, they have a CFO issued, they're, they're not under a TCO anymore, 502 South Main.
Okay. Yeah, well, I think we should be mayor aware of things like that that happen, if, if there's a temporary out there and they don't complete what they need to get permanent.
Right, and, and I do have the status of the CFO issued for 502.
I think that publishing probably, once it's official...
Once it's done and then pull it?
Once, once would probably suffice, 'cause we could always go back to the minutes and look, or to your packets, I'm sorry, and look if we're curious, right?
Yeah.
So you're not too, that's probably a lot to manage.
It, I wanna make sure you're, you're informed, but I guess if it's repeated, it doesn't do any value, so.
Yeah. I have a question on the Shalman Baker sites. Have you guys, and, and maybe it's something I can ask when they come back, but have you guys considered, like, a specific route that their construction trucks and, I know that there were concerns in the past about, you know, newer roads taking on all that traffic, and also, we are residential area, and semis flying down the road is not fun. Do you guys, have you guys considered that, or is that something that we would discuss further?
Yeah, so typically, the, the routes that those type of vehicles will take is discussed at the pre-construction meeting, held after site plan approval, so that'll probably be held once PC approves it and goes in front of City Council, and then, at that point, they'll discuss with the public works and engineers what route they wanna have their vehicles take to the site.
Okay.
And so that's for any, any commercial development. Granted, most of them are off of a major road, not in the residential neighborhood, but there will be dedicated routes that their vehicles are supposed to take.
And well, is there anywhere to reference those, for anybody that might be curious on what those routes are, once they are set in place?
I think for those sites, because of the, the public component to that, we can, we can share that with everyone.
Yeah, I'm sure. I was driving down, I forget, Bywood or something, and I noticed all the electrical, I'm sure that some of the roads, they probably can't even fit their truck down, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then also, for the plan, or for the training, have you ever done any of the things, like, in Frankenbooth or anything up that way? Have you or anybody?
I've done one in, gosh, where was that? Mount Pleasant, and that's the only non-virtual one I've attended.
Did you, and, did you find it very informative, or?
Very, it was more just like staff-related for zoning administrator staff.
Yeah.
But they do a fantastic job every time, so...
Yeah, I just feel like in-person would, would add another depth of...
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
And I think if there's a specific one that someone's looking for, if there can be more than one of you, but not all nine of you to mitigate any potential issues there, it would be beneficial, just so a couple of you are taking away the, the key, key takeaways.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Nick?
I just got one. Nick, you know, we had talked about that recommendation from the city manager on maybe alternance to parking underneath the, their commercial buildings or multifamily, and it seemed like there was interest in that, not putting in the master plan. Could we get that on the agenda, to have a discussion around that?
Yeah, we've, we've discussed it... Yeah, we've discussed it on how, how we'll move that forward and how we can have that discussion, so it's on our, not our physical agenda, but our, our agenda to discuss.
Okay, I just wanna remind, sometimes we forget, right? So, okay.
Anything further? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we'll move on to agenda number 11, which is legal update, and we do not have a lawyer tonight, so we will have no legal update. And if anybody has any comments, now's the time to make them, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I actually have a comment on, I, I know that we've talked before about the importance of Robert's Rules, and the opportunity to receive public comment, and we've kind of gotten in trouble for responding to residents. I did wanna point out that in our bylaws, it does give us the opportunity to ask the public questions if we, if we have further clarification by permission of you. If anybody is interested in reading more about it, it is on page five in article six, section two, so, just to let you all know, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I look at Robert's Rules as a suggestion as to how to run a, a meeting, so the meeting doesn't get out of control. I don't know that it's such a legal document, I don't think I'm gonna get myself in trouble. I can see the reasoning for it.
Yeah.
That you, you invite public up, and they say, let the public come up, ask their questions, but don't give them any answers. Well, that's not what the public wants. And I, I know I get challenged every time I give public a response, but I think that's the way I'm gonna continue to, to treat it, until someone calls me out on it.
Well, they do.
Anything else, otherwise, we'll...
Just wanna thank everybody for showing up today, it means a lot, it, appreciate that support. You guys care a lot, and we care about you, and it's a nice reminder to see you here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will make a motion to, to end the meeting.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Motion to support, can I roll call on that, please?
Who made this support there?
Aaron made it.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzher?
Yes.
Mr. Harrow?
Yes.
Mr. Cussero?
Yes.
Mr. Newshai?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yeah.
Mr. Tinland?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.